Okay, we'll call the meeting to order tonight. I'm Scott Stocking, the chairman of the commission. We have a slight modification of our normal operating procedure, thank God for COVID. We're now all in attendance. We don't have to wear masks and there's no restriction of people in the building. So that's good. That's progress. So we still, however, have some other things we're doing in order to accommodate people who don't feel comfortable attending in public. So there is a virtual attendance. People will be able to attend the meeting virtually if they so choose. So I walk through the procedures we're following this evening and so we can get started. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled March 10th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I again am Scott Stocking, chairman of the commission. And for tonight, for those of the benefit of the audience, I'm joined by David DeGroot, community development director, Jayton True, the planner, and we're here with all the commissioners. So I have Moran, Evans, me, Miskil, Sylva, and Holloman. So everybody is present, which is fantastic. So that's progress. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in a live stream meeting by accessing the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding the meeting and public comment rule modification, the link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the commission will host two public hearings regarding the agenda 5A and 5B. As the chairman of tonight's meeting, I'll guide the public, the applicant, and the commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The commission will open the public hearing and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their requests. Commission members will have the first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by a public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called upon virtually or in person. When given an opportunity to comment, we ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made already, you do not necessarily need to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from veering off topic and direct comments that are germane to the requests being considered. Following the end of the testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer and respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the commission, but public comment will not be reopened. Each public hearing may then be closed, followed by the commission deliberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during a public hearing agreed and understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Commissioners, please state your name prior to speaking, during the roll call, to better assist our record keepers, for instance, Stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. So that's how we'll proceed this evening. Since Celeste is not here, Jayton is going to call the roll.
Ready to call roll?
Yep.
Okay.
Me.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Holloman.
Holloman, here.
Sylva.
Sylva, here.
Miskil.
Miskil, here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is our approval of the minutes of the January 13th, 2022, meeting.
Moved, approved, Sylva.
Evans, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll move on to the public hearing items. Again, we have two of them, public hearing 5A and 5B. We'll take 5A first, which is a zoning text amendment. It's a text amendment to section 11-14-5AC of the Geneva zoning ordinance to allow a sixth type of sign variation, specifically to allow a tenant without street frontage in a multiple tenant or owner building to have one wall sign, awning sign, or canopy sign, provided that the total sign area of all signs on the building facade does not exceed the sign area that would otherwise be permitted for those tenants having street frontage. The location is the city of Geneva and the applicant is Cole Calamos of NK CFO LLC. I have been notified that the applicant cannot attend this evening due to a family matter. So Jayton will proceed with walking through the amendment, so.
Yeah, and I guess first I'll ask if the commission is comfortable with moving forward with the applicant not being present this evening.
I guess we'll see how it goes. If there's any questions that only he can answer, then we'll have to delay, but.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and start off with the contents of the file in that case. So the contents of this file includes an application for a zoning ordinance text amendment filed by Cole Calamos of NK CFO LLC dated January 25th, 2022. This application includes a statement of the applicant, or the statement of the request. Contents of this file also includes a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated February 23rd, 2022, as well as a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on April 20...uh, April...February 28th, 2022. Okay. So with that being said, obviously I wasn't expecting to present on this this evening, so just bear with me and I'll try to explain this as best as I can. It's relatively straightforward, but the applicant has filed a zoning ordinance text amendment to our section of the code that deals with sign variances. Sign variances in Geneva, there are limited to five different types of sign variances that an applicant can apply for, okay? So just to refresh everyone's memory, those five sign variances you can apply for to increase the maximum allowable area of any sign, to increase the maximum allowable height of any freestanding sign, to increase by not more than one sign, the maximum number of signs of any type otherwise allowed, to permit any wall sign, awning sign, or canopy sign to be displayed on a secondary building facade. And then the last one, number five, is to vary the requirements established in subsection 11-12-6D for electronic message board signs for regional professional semi-professional sports facilities, including event centers, arenas, and sports stadiums. So the proposed sixth type of sign variance, as Scott mentioned, would specifically be to allow a tenant without street frontage in a multiple tenant owner building to have one wall sign, awning sign, or canopy sign, provided that the total sign area of all the signs on the building facade does not exceed the sign area that would otherwise be permitted for those tenants having street frontage. Okay? So the way the code is set up right now is in a multiple tenant building such as this one, one building, maybe three tenants, the code states that an establishment may have a wall sign, or canopy sign, or awning sign on a facade with street frontage, okay? So if we look at the example up here, which this is the actual building, in this example, the suite that is occupied by an accountant office right now is right here. This space technically does not have street frontage, which is on the right side of the screen and the top portion of the screen. Because they do not have that street frontage access, they cannot have a wall sign on the outside of the building. Their actual space has to abut the street frontage where that sign would be located. From what I understand, this interpretation has maybe limited the signs that could be put on buildings such as this in this situation. So the applicant came forward and, you know, wanted to pursue putting a sign for that tenant on the outside of the building. They proposed this language with the help of city staff, and that's what they're proposing as of right now. So again, this would allow a tenant within this building that doesn't directly have street frontage to have a sign along a facade on the outside that does have that street frontage. Also, on the outside of the building, you know, a wall sign, canopy sign, a combination of those signs may be provided, given that the square footage of that area does not exceed 40 square feet, okay? So if there's an existing sign there that's maybe 30 square feet, and the maximum allowed is 40 square feet, then that other tenant could only put up a 10-square-foot sign. Or they could maybe work with that other tenant to even it out to maybe it's a 20-square-foot and 20-square-foot for two signs. But again, they cannot exceed that. Also, as I mentioned, this would be a type of variation. So this wouldn't be...
By right.
Yeah, as proposed, yeah, this would not be by right across the board in all of Geneva. They would still have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and request this, and then your recommendation would obviously go to the city council for final consideration.
Oh, go ahead, Rebecca.
Would other tenants in this building have to apply, or does it...will it go with this address?
It's specifically for a suite 202.
Okay, so if someone else moved in, then they would have to come before us again and get not a text amendment change, but...
Ask for a variation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Are you taking questions?
Yes.
Questions?
Question...okay, so as I read this, it's 40 square feet or two times the linear square footage on a street front. So there's 108 linear feet on this building, so they could have 216 square feet, but it's limited by the 40.
Yeah, so it's whatever's less.
Okay, whatever's less. There could be a situation where...there could be a situation, I suppose, where not every exterior tenant, or tenant with a street frontage, has a sign, an interior tenant gets a sign, and it hits the 40, so thereby preventing a tenant with a frontage wall from getting an additional sign, because we cannot exceed the 40? Or do we have the right to recommend that as part of the variance if somebody wanted to take it to 50 or something? Would that be something that would come in front of us? Or are we...or how strict are we on the 40?
So the way that this specific sixth type of variance is worded is that you could not exceed that 40. It has to be at that 40, because the other...as I mentioned, one of the first variation allowed is to ask for an increase in the maximum allowable sign area. So the way that the sixth is worded, they would not be able to apply to make it bigger. It has to be within that 40, which is what is permitted.
So they couldn't come for...for number one and number six?
No cases for it.
Okay, that's fine. And there's nothing wrong with requiring a building owner to manage within their tenancies so that they don't exceed the 40. And it may hurt them when they're trying to lease empty space or something, but they've got to manage to the 40. And it seems like this building owner is attempting to do that and doing it.
Just a point of clarification, it's a maximum of 40 square feet. David, mic. It's on. My light's on. Sorry. The red light wasn't on. It's done up. It's a maximum of 40 square feet per tenant, so that's the...it's not a maximum of 40 square feet for the entire building facade, it's for each tenant that has frontage on that facade. So in this case, it looks like we've got...
I didn't read it that way.
No, it's 40 altogether, yeah.
No, I mean, that's the way the code is applied, is you get a two-square-feet of sign per every one foot of linear street frontage, with a maximum of 40 square feet, but that is on a per-tenant basis. So for each tenant space, you take their frontage, measure that, and it's a maximum of two-square-feet per lineal foot, or 40-square-feet. Because otherwise, 40-square-feet on a building 208 feet long is not really...
Sure not going to read, is it?
I...yeah, I need to spend some more time with it. I thought I read it differently, I'm sorry if I did, but...
Yeah, me too. And I even thought Jayton explained it differently.
I blame the planner that wrote the code.
Okay, because that eliminates a lot of the problems and a lot of what I was going to follow up on John's question.
Well, but I think what Jayton was trying to explain was that, so if you have, let's say, three tenant spaces, they're each a maximum of 40-square-feet, if that...those are all taken up, you can't...you're not eligible for this sixth type of variation. But if there is room, if there's like, say, 100-square-feet instead of 120 already up there, then they can apply for the variation for up to a 20-square-foot sign.
So what are you...so are you saying that if there's three tenants fronting and they each had 40, it wouldn't be possible for a rear-side tenant to come and do this at all?
Right.
Okay. And then are you further limited by the overall width of the building of 108 feet times two, so 216? You couldn't have more than five signs or something, five and a...something signs? Or are you just limited by the frontage of the specific tenant?
For this variation, you're limited by the overall area that would be allowed on that building facade.
The overall area is determined by the tenant and its frontage, or the overall length of the building?
The tenants along that frontage, so...
Which should add up to...
If you had three, it would be...
Another question for you, tenant on the first floor and tenant on the second floor, does that double the 40?
Yeah, so you get each tenant...yeah, it does. So you get...you're allowed to have signs on the second floor and the first floor.
And that's by right, so we would...they wouldn't come to us?
Right.
The way it's currently written?
Right.
Okay. So we're dealing with...can an interior tenant, if I can call them that, have exterior signage on a frontage? They only can as long as there's capacity that exists.
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead, now.
So suppose the building owner has the interior tenant, but one of the exterior tenant spaces is empty. He gives this sign, the sign rights, to the interior tenant, wants to lease the exterior space, and now there's no room, that tenant gets nothing? Or do they, since the zoning code allows them without any variation to have a sign, would they by right be able to say, "But I'm entitled to a sign"?
That's part of the reason the code is written the way it is now, is to avoid those kind of conflicts in the future, because a landlord can come in and say, "Well, this tenant's fine with it, so we want to let this interior tenant have an exterior sign", but then the tenants change and then it's no longer okay, and it becomes a mess. And that's why we, rather than recommending, just changing the text, recommended to allow it as a variation, to deal with some unique circumstances. In this case, the proposed sign is not actually being proposed on another tenant's frontage, it's being proposed in kind of a common area on that second floor. You can kind of see the rest of the old area there.
Okay.
And that's where the exterior sign's being proposed. Oh, no, I'm sorry, they are...they're putting it on the corner of the applicant's frontage.
It'd be like right in here.
So it is...
Which is the not-for-profit.
It is the building owner's frontage that they are placing it on, it's not another tenant.
So it's like you said, the owner has to manage... Right, and the owner could be sorry later, because he could potentially lose an opportunity to lease the space if someone found out they wouldn't be able to have any sign on the outside. So it's a risk to the owner.
Right.
But I guess that's their business is to decide that, if they want to take that risk.
And then come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council for that variation.
So I guess my question is that the rights really go with the building owner in this case, rather than the tenant? Because the building owner is getting to allocate the space for signs, rather than how it would normally be, which would be the tenant gets to decide, because by right, that tenant can have a sign, but because of this interior variable, it now becomes the building owner who decides who gets signs, which isn't really the way I don't think the intent was for the code to work, that the building owner would allocate signage.
Except that the interior...that allocation on interior is subject to commission review and city hall review.
Right, but once we approve an interior sign, then it's up to the building owner to decide what happens to the rest of the people in there.
True. Well, that was a question I was going to have, is this...if we get to public hearing number two, is it tenant-specific? So if that tenant, the CPA, leaves, if they...if they put another tenant in there, do they have to come back to us? Or does that tenant then by right have the ability to put a sign up?
Typically, we recommend that the variation runs with the property and not with a specific tenant.
At that point, it's up to the owner, can use it for whoever they want, I suppose, but they're using...
But if the variation's been approved and it runs with the property and not the tenant, then the next tenant who comes in automatically gets the sign, so then it isn't up to the building owner anymore.
Unless they've allocated it to another tenant that didn't have a sign.
Right.
Right.
It still seems like it's taking...I mean, I'm generally in favor of making this work, but it does seem to me like it's shifting the power to decide who has signage more towards the building owner than it ever was before in some situations.
Through the variation process, and does that require...
Is that okay?
I don't know. I mean, I guess that's okay, if that's...if everybody's happy with it, it's just a change.
Yeah, so who would actually be, in the case of the interior office, as the applicant? The owner? Or could a tenant apply? Or if they did, would they need some type of authorization then from the owner as well?
To apply for the variation?
Yes.
You do need the owner's permission to apply for the variation.
So that would be a required approval?
It could be the applicant, but they would need their authorization.
Okay. Yeah. This applies to both frontages, right?
In this case, it could.
Fifth Street?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Because there is frontage along that side.
Do you know if there's other buildings with similar floor plans where this might come up?
There are.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, if you just think about like the Berry House, there's a number of interior tenants there.
Good example.
Just right across the street from this building, there's an accountant, I mean, there's businesses on the bottom, and then the other businesses along.
Does it get cumbersome? There's a tenant on the corner, I think it's CIBC or something, their sign goes out at kind of a 45, does that get allocated to which frontage when you're figuring out your maximum? Or does it matter? Maybe it doesn't matter, because the 40-square-feet is per-tenant, not per-building side, I guess, or...
Yeah. Yeah, so they...I mean, they give a 40-square-footage of signage along that portion, because that's the portion that they actually occupy. So in that case, it's on the corner, like...
Yeah, and they couldn't have two signs, right? By right?
They could, as long as it doesn't exceed that 40-square-feet or...
So they could put two 20-foot...they did want it at an angle, which makes sense, but they could put two 20-footers, 20-square-footers.
Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, my concern is almost the complete opposite of this discussion. Every building on State Street potentially could go through this. Every building on State Street has a second floor. This resulted because the frontage subdivided their space and created a space in the back. There's nothing stopping any property owner on Third from doing this, which leads me to think that the potential for the number of increased signs could be double. And I assume this is written the way it is to avoid just that potentiality, that we don't want a multitude of smaller signs up and down State Street that would look frankly like a slot machine. That's my problem with this idea.
Yeah, I think that the code as it's currently constructed was intended to kind of limit that proliferation of a bunch of small signs. We've had, obviously, a lot of back and forth with this applicant over probably the course of a year, maybe, resulting in them wanting to apply for the text amendment to allow for the variation. And our recommendation was to put some limitation on it, so you didn't wind up with...you at least wind up with the same amount of sign area that would otherwise be allowed, and not adding additional signage to what would otherwise be permitted.
And there's still the limitations, there's no electric signs or all of those are still...
But for instance, they could put how many 40-square-foot signs on this building? And if...just the way it's divided now, one, two, there's seven spaces along State Street, they could have seven 40-square-foot signs at street level, or at second floor today by right?
I'm not seeing seven.
I'm just seeing...I'm just looking at the...
Two or three, two or four.
I'm not counting the tenants, Dave, I'm just saying if you leased those individual...
Space.
Seven spaces that'll run along to different tenants, you could do that. They could have seven 40-square-foot signs. Should there be a limit overall to a building's frontage based on its total frontage, similar to what you have here? Two times the 108 would be 216, so you'd have some limit.
Let me zoom in a little bit, because I think you're looking at the rooms versus the suites.
No, I am, intentionally, Jayton, because theoretically, someone could make each of those a separate leasable area, theoretically.
Isn't that what...
To Tim's point of how busy it gets looking, if you had seven up top and seven down below, or it could even be more.
There's no limit to the number of signs at all, as long as you don't exceed the square footage. So with...that could happen without even having this variation, you could end up with...
True, true.
With a dozen tiny signs, if you had a bunch of closet-sized businesses in there.
Should there be a limit on overall sign square footage without seeking approval? I guess, either based on linear frontage, or just based on a number that makes sense to some degree?
I don't know if that's...I mean, it's not the application that's before us tonight.
Right, well, and I wish they were here to speak to that, but...
But generally, the...you know, I was involved in the rewrite of the sign code back in 2011, '12, and I think some of us were on the commission at that time. That 40-square-foot max and that two-square-feet per lineal foot of frontage was a carryover from the prior code, and it's generally seemed to work pretty well. We haven't had signs that...or buildings that are really overtaken by signage. So it seems to be a standard that's held true for a couple decades at least here. I guess you could wind up with a bunch of smaller signs, but at some point, a small sign, you know, is not effective.
Just to ask a clarification, so the two...in this case, the 216-square-feet, is that the aggregate permitted of all signs on that frontage?
No, so the allowable...in a multi-tenant building, the allowable area is per-tenant space. So you take the linear frontage of each tenant's space, and that's two-square-feet for that space per lineal foot, or a maximum of 40, whichever's less. So you go down the frontage with however many tenant spaces you have.
So all the...regardless of the number of signs, they can't add up to be more than 216-square-feet?
Depends on how they...
No, that's what I was saying, but...
But yeah, that's what I thought, too.
It wouldn't be...I guess if that's your maximum length, yeah. But you could do that on two floors, so you'd have 216 on two floors.
Yeah.
So if a tenant's frontage is 20 feet, right, so it's...they can get...they can have up to 40 square feet?
Right.
If it's 15, they can only have 30 square feet, potentially, could be. So the total of all the signs on that one level, at least on the second floor, could only equal the 216?
Right.
Unless they come up to us for a variation.
To increase the area.
To increase the area.
That's only for those who have the frontage, though, right? Not for the back tenant?
Right, right now, the back tenants don't have any rights to an exterior wall.
But I mean, they couldn't come for variation six and variation one, like you're saying, they can only...
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, so I think the situation that they just outlined was by right, so then they could apply for that first variation to increase the sign area.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What did Rebecca bring up?
I was just clarifying that it's only...you can only apply for the first variation if you are on the front, like the street facing, right?
Oh, the number one, the increase the maximum sign, okay.
That's that the sign was by right, and they didn't have to go through this potential sixth variation.
And as written, this request under public hearing number two, it doesn't...would that take it over the...it's still limited to the 216, 216-square-feet, correct?
Right.
We're just taking the requirement off that it doesn't have to have frontage.
We're just taking the requirement off that it doesn't have to have frontage.
Right. And it's only for, it's only for the suite. It's not for any suite that becomes interior, correct?
Right.
It seems to me there isn't really any detriment to the city in allowing this. It just puts an additional burden on the building owner to allocate signage. And if they want to take on that burden.
They're going to agree that the variance goes forward, so if they don't agree with that, it's dead. So.
Right.
Again, they're going to try to cooperate with their tenants as they can and try to get stuff, but they have to have the ability to ask. Right now, the ordinance doesn't allow that.
So the only thing that's really, it seems to me, is it all questionable and you said it runs, is that you said it runs with the property and not with the tenant. So the building owner is, it's done. Once the variation has been approved for that interior, they can't come back and change that to accommodate that exterior tenant that may have lost some of their square footage, so. But that's a risk the building owner takes. If it runs with the property and not the tenant, which all zoning does, so that would make sense.
Right, but if the tenant leaves, their sign leaves too.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Building owner a new opportunity to reevaluate if they want to take advantage of the variation or not.
That's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, so there's, there's some flexibility.
That works.
How often does a tenant not want to max out their sign, signage? Like typically, the only reason this is coming up is because he has a vacancy along the frontage, right? For him to allow a tenant on the backside to take some frontage signage, right? I mean, it, it varies. I think mostly we see tenants, whether it's a multi-tenant building or a single tenant building, trying to max out the forty square feet.
Yeah.
But there's, there's instances where that's not the case. I mean, like the Andrew. They don't have a sign at all, one of the most popular restaurants in the region.
Right.
So it just depends.
Depends, okay. Any other questions? John, do you have anything further?
No, I'm just pointing out that as shown on this picture, that's only sixty-four square feet of total signage on the second floor. The new sign, the future sign, and then these other two signs. There's twenty foot, twenty foot, and two at twelve, so there's plenty of capacity.
Any other comments, questions, the staff for this? Okay, sir, do you wish to speak on this matter? Okay. If anyone in the public who's attending the meeting is, if there is anyone.
We have no members of the public attending virtually at this time.
Okay, so then you don't have to raise your hand because there are. So, um, no public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Evan, second.
Moved and seconded. Jayden? Call the rule, please. Because we're not saying it's the last.
Begins with a C.
Mead?
Uh, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Moran? Moran, aye.
Aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay.
And there's still an opportunity for us to discuss if anybody.
There is, yeah.
If not, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve a text amendment to section eleven dash fourteen dash five A.C. of the Geneva zoning ordinance to allow a sixth type of sign variation specifically, quote, "to allow a tenant without street frontage in a multiple tenant slash owner building to have one wall sign, comma, awning sign, comma, or canopy sign, comma, provided that the total sign area of all signs on the building facade does not exceed the sign area that would otherwise be permitted for those tenants having street frontage," end quote, "subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report."
Second.
Matoskill? Sorry, sorry, second.
I think Michael got that one.
Okay.
Yep. Moved and seconded. Jayden, please call the rule.
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Moran?
Aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
It passes.
All right, fantastic.
This recommendation will go before the city council on Monday, March twenty-first at seven P.M. Right here in the public hearing.
Okay, so now we're going to actually apply the ordinance. The newly recommended ordinance, so sign variation five B. Sign variation to allow a tenant without street frontage in a multiple tenant owner building to have one wall sign upon the West State Street building facade. Location is five oh one State Street. The applicant is Cole Calmos. Again, he is not present to, due to a family matter, to present, so we will walk through it. Jayden will walk through his application. Hopefully, if there are any outstanding questions that can't be answered, so. If the commission is good with that, we'll proceed. Okay. Jayden, you want to?
Did we open the public hearing?
We're doing that right now, yeah.
I think we open it and then I do the contents of the file.
Right, right.
Do you need a motion for that? I don't think so.
No, 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 I just read it, so we've opened it. So we've opened the matter, so now we read the record.
Okay, so the contents of this file includes an application for a sign variation filed by Cole Calmos of N.K.C.F.O.L.L.C. dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, including the following items. Project narrative, response to sign variation standards, legal description of the property, location of sign and designs, proof of ownership, plat of survey, list of property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property, and an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also includes a copy of the letter to all property owners within five hundred feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated March tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, very good.
All right, so now the applicant has submitted a sign variance for the sixth type of sign variance that we just recommended approval to the city council. In total, this, this sign would be twelve square feet along the West State Street frontage of the building. And perhaps I can pull up a better visual. So I believe that is the sign that would be, the new sign that would be erected. So this sign would be a total of twelve square feet. It matches the existing signage that is on the property currently, so it would be consistent. And it is, and there's another rendering of what that sign would look like. But it would fit within that, you know, that maximum forty square foot area that is allowed. It is not anticipated to, you know, according to our findings of fact that we put together, it's not anticipated to create an adverse effect to the area or the building. I mean, this potential new sign is, resembles what is there existing. And there, to our knowledge, there have not been any issues with pedestrian safety or anything else that could adversely affect the surrounding area from the sign.
Okay. Any questions? I mean, the building's set up well to do this kind of thing, so. It fills the spot perfect, so.
And I find all the standards, one through five, supportable.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it certainly follows everyone else's sign setup, so it's not like going to the max or anything, so. It's, it's within the range of a variation, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, sir, do you wish to speak on this matter? Just attending. Fantastic, okay. Since there's no one here in City Hall wishes to speak, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on this matter?
We do not have any members online.
We do not, so apparently no public comment on this item as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Second it. Mead?
Moved and seconded. Jayden?
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a sign variation from section eleven dash twelve dash six to allow Soraya J. McTeague, CPA Incorporated, a tenant within, without a street frontage in suite two oh two of the building located at five oh one West State Street to have a wall sign along the State Street frontage, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Holloman, second.
Moved and seconded. Jayden?
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Moran?
Aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
It passes.
All right.
So again, this recommendation of the variance will go before the city council on Monday, March twenty-first, first at seven P.M. in the city council chambers here at City Hall.
Thank you, so you'll be happy, I guess, so that's, that's a good. So we have public comment, sir, are you here to, public comment?
I do not have a public comment.
Okay, I'm just asking because that's the next item on our agenda. And we don't have anybody online, so we're not going to get on that, so then we move to other business, which is what's been happening, and I'm sure there's lots been going on.
Yes, so.
December? Was it December, last meeting?
January.
Yeah, January.
January, okay, okay.
So I get ahead of ourselves, guys. So.
It's been a while, though.
So, yeah, but it has, it has been a while, and that's mainly because we have had a lot of applications that are kind of cooking in the kitchen, if you will. So I will go over our active applications we have right now. So I'll start with the Fox Valley Commerce Center. This is the proposed industrial, light industrial development at the northwest corner of Couch Road and Geneva Drive. They have, they have finally gotten their information that we need from them to proceed to the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that will be scheduled on Thursday, March twenty-fourth at seven P.M. right here in this city council chambers. I'm trying to think if there's anything else on that one. The public hearing has been scheduled as of right now, and that's the only item as of right now that we have on that agenda for that meeting.
That might be a fairly meaty package, right?
Yes.
Will that be coming out the week of or could it come out the week before?
Yeah, so we will do our best to get that to you at least by the Friday before, so I.
That'd be helpful.
So, yeah, we will do that, our best to get that to you. And the updated documents are on the website too, on our development page. So if you want to take a sneak peek, you can look through that. But yes, that package should be ready to pick up that agenda and package, should be ready to pick up on Friday, March nineteenth. That is the goal. If anything changes, we will let you know. Any other questions on that? Okay. Next, we have the Valley Animal Hospital. They are seeking to revise their P.U.D. and also amend the comprehensive plan for a parking lot expansion. That's currently under city staff review. Geneva Route Thirty-eight Logistics Center. This is a light industrial building proposed along East State Street. Between Couch Road, or I'm sorry, Kirk Road and Couch Road on the north side. That is still under staff review right now, and that would eventually come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for site plan review. So no public hearing would be required with that project as of right now. We also have the Verizon Tower at Oscar Swan. That is currently under, or I'm sorry, that is with the applicant right now. We're waiting on another submission from, from that applicant. We have some updated information, some revised information that we need to be provided to us before they are ready to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, we have four twenty-seven Fulton Street. That resident, it's a residential property, single-family home with a detached garage. He is seeking to demolish that garage and build a new one, but it needs, he's requesting some variations in regards to setbacks and lock coverage.
That was before some another form was actually.
Yes, that's a, yes, that's a great point. So that was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission in September, I believe it was August or September twenty-twenty, right before I got here. Yeah, so memorable, yes. So.
It was memorable.
So I believe the commission provided some recommendations on how else or other ways that the garage could lay on the property.
We attempted to.
Yes, so some, that has been taken into consideration, and now they're moving forward with an alternative proposal, so. But again, it needs some variations, so.
Okay.
And then we also have Hamilton Place. This is a resubmission of the Hamilton Place proposal. Right now, they're asking for forty-seven single-family townhome units on that property. I believe it will require a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and then preliminary P.U.D. and plat of subdivision. The C-tron site, yes.
The concept was before us September? Same, same developer?
Same developer, yep. So, yeah, so the cons, I mean, what has been submitted, it's on the website right now if you want to take a look at it, but it hasn't changed much since the concept review when we first reviewed that back then, so.
Some of the things we had touched upon were kind of residential over retail and state, maybe some affordable component. Probably residents developers need to explain why or why not that's included.
Yes, I do recall those suggestions, so.
What's, what's the address?
Still be having our mics on when we're speaking. Sorry. Sorry.
So that, that's located at the northeast corner of Richards and State Street. So just west of the seven eleven, that property. And then lastly, we have the Cornerstone Affordable Housing Development. That will be posted on the website tomorrow, but we did just accept their application this afternoon. But this is a two hundred and fifty unit affordable housing development that will be proposed at the southwest corner of State Street and Kirk Road.
Oh, great.
So they are requesting a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and then a preliminary planned unit, or I guess an amendment to an existing planned unit development and plat of subdivision. So that, and as I mentioned, that should be on the website tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, cool.
But obviously, we have a lot of cases right now. That's just half of what we anticipate to be getting. The other ones are still being worked out, not ready for formal submission yet. And because we have such a large workload, I will also mention that we are seeking to hire an assistant planner for the department to kind of help with the influx of projects that we have.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's currently out. We're accepting applications. It's going well so far.
Good.
So we should have a pretty healthy candidate pool to choose from. And I believe the last day, or the day that that. And I believe the last day, or the day that that closes is March 24th, I believe, or 29th.
Oh, it's the 27th. You're wrong with both times.
The end of March, so.
The last week in March.
Is that a permanent position, or did you say it's just because of the influx or?
It's a full-time position. It's budgeted for the next fiscal year. And then, you know, if, if we, activity slows down, we can reevaluate in the future.
And it's like, like we mentioned, this, it's to help with the project load that we have, but also there are some other long-term, long-range planning goals that we have that, you know, we would like to focus on and bring before the community and this commission and City Council. And, you know, with all these projects, sometimes that's, it's difficult to get to. So this will hopefully help Geneva in the long run with planning, you know. I think that's about it on the projects. I will also mention that we're all familiar with the economic impact statements that we have to fill out annually, so those, I, I believe you should be getting some emails in the near future just asking to renew those. So those should be coming from Kane County, I believe. So just keep an eye out for those.
I've heard it's a slightly different format this year. I don't know how so. So I guess just be prepared for some changes to the form. Okay, thanks for the heads up.
I think that's all I have. David, do you have any, anything else?
That's enough for now.
State Street rewidening, is that starting soon?
Yeah.
No?
That street, oh my God.
Isn't it just like this spring, isn't it?
No, I think it, I think it's now at 2023.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How long has it been?
Since I've been here.
I know, the money's been there for us. Geneva's had the money in there for.
They're getting much closer, the Dunkin', it's getting much closer.
It is?
They are, they have, I saw that they have got just a few review comments left to address with IDOT, to get their permit from IDOT. Then they'll have some modifications to make to the access points on State Street, and then they would open, so.
Okay.
Everything else done.
Donuts are getting stale.
Lights in, everything's.
It's quite close. I mean, we, it's kind of a final inspection from our perspective, but please tell me that I got some approval.
Okay.
Okay.
It's up to IDOT.
Move to adjourn.
Ma'am.
Awesome, good to see everybody.